Good morning, everybody. It is Tuesday, March 11, 2025. This is a special meeting of the Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach. We're live in City Hall Commissioners Room, second floor. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 9:02 a.m. I'd like to do roll call. Commissioner Mark Saunders.
Present.
Commissioner Suzanne Good, absent. Commissioner Ed Stranowski.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Bunky Markert.
Here.
Commissioner Craig Thier.
Here.
Mayor Stan Mills is here. And while we don't have a full complement of the Mayor Commissioners, we do have a quorum, so we are able to formally conduct business today. The -- also like to indicate the staff that's here. We've got Mary Ellen, Community Planning Director, City Secretary Anne Womack, City Manager Taylor Tetter, and Assistant City Manager Evan Miller hiding in the back robe, farthest seat he can get from us. The purpose of a special meeting today is for a public hearing on two potential ordinances regarding the authority of the Rehoboth Beach Planning Commission. The first ordinance is to consider an ordinance to create a new Section 236-6.2 regarding applicability of Planning Commission authority to decisions of the city's Board of Adjustment. amend Chapter 236, Section 236-9, titled "Partitioning of Land," Section 236-10, titled "Minor Subdivisions: Consolidation of Lots," amend Section 236-12, titled "Approval Procedure for Major Subdivisions," and amend Section 236-30, titled "Site Plan Required Purpose Considerations," to clarify the authority of the Planning Commission regarding interpretation and enforcement of Chapter 270 zoning in site plan review and in minor and major subdivision review, also subtitled "The PC Version." And the second ordinance is to amend Section 270-82 relating to the Building Inspector's authority to interpret and enforce Chapter 270 zoning, also known as the PC version. You can see the embedded documents there and correspondence that we received ahead of time there. With that, I'm going to turn -- this is a public hearing, so we will be hearing from members of the public. And with that, I'll turn it over to our interim city solicitor, Max Walton.
I've been provided proof of publication that the proposed resolution was published in the Delaware State News on February 18 -- or, excuse me, February 21st and Sunday, February 23rd, and was published in the Cape Gazette on Tuesday, February 25th. And Womack, can you confirm that the advertisements ran and that the agenda was posted for the meeting today?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor, with that, we're set to go to public hearing.
All righty. This is, again, a public hearing. We have two ordinances before us. My preference is that when we get to a motion, that maybe we entertain the second ordinance first, but that's up to the Commissioners. With that, I'll open the public hearing and say ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor or against or to comment. If you would, come up to the center microphone. Anybody? Julie?
Yes, Mayor, if it's all right, I'd like to stay.
That'd be fine there, Julie. If you would state your name in relationship to the city, please.
Yes, Julie. My name is Julie Davis. I am a member of the Planning Commission. I'm here today because I was unable to attend the joint meeting on January 23rd for medical reasons, but I wanted to make the point then, and I will make it now, that the opposition to these proposed ordinances has been largely characterized by misstatements and misconceptions. First, it is absolutely false that the proposed ordinances will give or transfer from the Building Inspector to the Planning Commission the authority to interpret the zoning code for site plan review purposes or subdivision purposes. The code also -- excuse me, does not make any mention of an interpretive role for the Building Inspector in the subdivision process. Since 2009, when the site plan review process was adopted by the Board of Commissioners, until last year, in a single case, there's been no controversy over who had that authority, where that authority should lie, or whether that authority should remain with the Planning Commission. Second, the claim that the Planning Commission is not accountable to anyone is similarly false. The Planning Commission is fully accountable to the city. The mayor appoints our members. The Board of Commissioners confirms the appointments. The Planning Commission's authority under Chapter 236 is narrowly limited to major projects, and its decisions are appealable to the Board of Commissioners. The Planning Commission is also fully accountable to the public. By law, its meetings and hearings must be publicly noticed, conducted in public sessions, and recorded for viewing by the public. In addition, all -- I'm sorry, all Planning Commission proceedings are subject to the state's open meeting statutes and its FOIA rules, and its members are prohibited from having ex parte communications with developers or their representatives. That said, compare this with the situation or the lack of public oversight of the Building Inspector, who frequently, if not routinely, meets with developers and their representatives on major development projects out of the -- behind closed doors and out of the sight of the public. And then finally, it is absolutely false that the -- that the building officials throughout the country and including in Delaware have exclusive authority to interpret the jurisdiction zoning codes in major development cases. As you know, Michael Strange, a Planning Commission member, conducted a nationwide survey last year and was unable to identify a single jurisdiction in which building officials had exclusive authority to interpret the jurisdiction zoning code for major commercial projects. Since then...
Finish your thought.
Yes, I didn't get to talk in January, and it's not much.
Finish your thought within a reasonable amount of time.
It will be -- I promise you, it will be very reasonable. Since then, additional research has been conducted by the Planning Commission members concerning seven Delaware municipalities that also have planning commissions. Four of them, Camden, Dover, Georgetown, and Milton, authorize their planning commissions to review proposed site or development plans for major commercial projects for compliance with the local zoning code, and then the planning commissions make the final binding decisions regarding compliance and regarding approval of the plans or denial of the plans. The other three municipalities, Lewis, Newark, and Wilmington, authorize their planning commissions to determine compliance with the local zoning codes, but then recommend approval or denial of the plans to their elected city officials. Bottom line, as far as I'm aware, no member of the city staff, its legal advisers, or any member of the public has identified a single municipality in Delaware or elsewhere in the country where building officials have the exclusive authority to interpret the zoning code regarding major development plans. For these reasons and for the sake of orderly development and redevelopment of the city's commercial districts, including our treasured boardwalk and beach, I urge you to approve the ordinances that are now the subject of this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody else? Hoyt, would you mind coming to the front? Or, go ahead.
A lot more confident.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
State your name in relationship to the city. Start off.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Hoyt Decker. I live on Laurel Street in town. Okay. This print keeps getting smaller. I have a number of concerns I'd like to address for the record here this morning. First of all and foremost, the issue, in my opinion, is actually the city code. And widespread, if not total, opinion is that there is a need for a complete review and possible rewrite of the city code. I'll note that yesterday, the Board of Commissioners had a workshop meeting, actually initiated some discussion of a possible code review. That's good. But I will also note that the Commissioners had the same opportunity several years ago to initiate the same sort of discussion and instead dissolve the Law Oversight Committee, which was established for the very purpose of code review. In a February 14, 2025 editorial, the Cape Gazette said, quote, "Cleaning up the city's ambiguous zoning code should remain a top priority. Rehoboth Beach is constantly -- excuse me, evolving, and redevelopment is inevitable. Rehoboth should do all it can to ensure its code is crystal clear on what is allowed and what is not," end quote. So as to the Planning Commission, what is its role? Chapter 7, Title 22 of the Delaware Code, states specifically in paragraph 703 under General Studies and Reports, quote, "The Planning Commission shall have full power and authority to make such investigations, maps, and reports of the resources, possibilities, and needs of the city or town as it deems it desirable." Provisions in the city code, Section 236, subdivision of land and site plan, may have strayed a little bit from that primary intent of the state law. Then there is the matter of the Building Inspector's office. It has been suggested that there are -- that there may have been some dubious decisions made in the office, an unexplained reversal, quote-unquote, of a decision. It has also been said that for some time, there have been missed deadlines, incomplete or possibly inaccurate information in the reports issued by the office. The administration of the city's policies and procedures are critical to the quality of service it provides to the residents, businesses, and even visitors, not to mention its adherence to the city code and the state law. If there are shortfalls in its administration, they must be corrected. I'm sorry, I got about one paragraph.
Go ahead and finish.
Thank you. Today, the Planning Commission is a reflection of the system of government, where the body's composition is the result of the exercise of power by the majority faction, which can result in slanted decisions. An improved city code might replace the system of using political appointees with qualified and fully trained, that's underscored, city staff, whose responsibility is to make balanced, nonpartisan decisions that benefit the general public. Just as it is the current practice, the adjudication process should be conducted in the open at meetings where the various interests, including the public, would have an opportunity to participate, and the discussions reached, decisions reached, would be explained, justified, and disseminated in the same manner as it is today with the Planning Commission. But in the end, it's a rewrite of the city code that is the real solution to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Hoyt. Anybody else want to speak as far as this public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and it brings it up to the Commissioners for a discussion and possible consideration of a vote. Is there any discussion first? Well, I've got -- I'd like to share my perspective with you, that -- if you remember, we've got the PC version of this ordinance in front of us, and we disallowed bringing the BI version, Building Inspector version, in front of it. I happen to be a fan of the BI version. I believe that the Building Inspector is the decision-maker with respect to interpretation and enforcement of Chapter 270 zoning regarding site plan review, lot consolidation, lot partitioning, and major and minor subdivision review, subject only to appeal to the city's Board of Adjustment. I also believe that the process should be that if the Planning Commission disagrees with an interpretation of Chapter 270 zoning made by the Building Inspector in site plan, lot consolidation, lot partitioning, major or minor subdivision review, then the Planning Commission may appeal the Building Inspector's decision to the Board of Adjustment, but the PC -- or Planning Commission, I'm sorry, but the Planning Commission cannot otherwise independently overrule Building Inspector's decision on Chapter 70, 270 zoning issues. I believe the current code supports this. I haven't found anything in the code to support that. I haven't found anything in the code that allows the Planning Commission to make independent I believe the PC version in front of us is based upon the invention of the Planning Commission and demonstrates a power grab. Part of the Agenda Item Report indicates that on May 6, 2024, Board of Commissioners heard a presentation by the Planning Commission attorney and presented some recommendations. Quote, "The recommendations included, among other things, a change to Chapter 236, Section 30E," which reads, quote, "The Planning Commission shall independently review a site plan and determine whether the plan complies with applicable city laws and regulations, including but not limited to this chapter," which is 236, "and Chapter 270," which is Continuing the same thought, even the proposed ordinance in front of us has whereas clauses that indicate that, in my view, again, it's a power play by the Planning Commission. The, quote, "The Planning Commission has proposed changes to the city code, which, if adopted, provide the Planning Commission the ability to independently review site and subdivision plans for compliance with the city's zoning code." For me, doing that takes such duties away from the Building Inspector and instead establishes that the Planning Commission, not the Building Inspector, is, quote, "the final arbiter to interpret the city's zoning code, Chapter 270, and the site plan, lot consolidation, lot partitioning, and subdivision review process, subject only to appeal to the Commissioners." Further down in the proposed ordinance in front of us, it says, "In no -- in cases where no appeal to the Board of Adjustment is filed, and the Planning Commission renders an interpretation contrary to the Building Inspector's interpretation, the Building Inspector shall enforce the chapter in accordance with the Planning Commission's final and unappealed code interpretation." I think that's absolutely horrible. What it does is it establishes a potential for friction between the Building Inspector and the Planning Commission, and establishes the potential for the Building Inspector to have to enforce his own interpretation for things beyond site plan review, et cetera. And then, then he has to also enforce a different interpretation, the Planning Commission's interpretation, when they render so different than his. I just think that that puts the Building Inspector into a horrible situation. You know, one of the support documents for the March 20 Bellhaven case is embedded in the agenda already, and it's an amicus statement from the Building Inspector's Department or on behalf of the Building Inspector. And I accept the premises of the amicus brief, and I believe they're applicable to this situation. And I'm going to read some of the philosophy and the introduction to it. This amicus brief indicates that "The Building and Licensing Department is charged under the city code and Delaware law with interpreting and enforcing zoning matters in a plethora of circumstances, including in many instances outside of the subdivision and site plan review processes. Its ability to -- its ability, the Building and Licensing ability, to effectively perform this, meaning interpreting and enforcing zoning matters, will be undermined by competing interpretations and inconsistent decision-makers. Without correction, the result will be uncertainty, disruption, and a loss of confidence among the community." Further, it continues, "The process advocated in advance by the Planning Commission in this matter has been anything but clear and is arguably not legally sound." My rationale for my vote when we get to the vote today has nothing to do with the current composition of the Planning Commission. I think they do a good job. They're competent. I just think that they are stretching some of their recommendations for amendments to 236 and 270. My rationale for my vote today will be that I am totally influenced by multiple city attorneys, and influenced by city staff, and influenced by past chair of the Planning Commission who stood up here and spoke at a previous meeting, that the current code vests, this is my opinion, that the current code vests final zoning interpretation for site plan review with the Building Inspector, and I would like it to remain the same. Therefore, I would be voting no to adopting the PC version of the ordinance in this matter. And if the Building Inspector version was to be voted on, I would be voting to adopt that version. That's my spiel. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I make just a quick comment on the Bellhaven issue? This proceeding here today is a legislative determination going forward. There's an appeal of the Bellhaven that remains unimpacted because there's legal issues. So I just want to make it clear to the public, because that was referred to, that the two are separate. This is going forward.
Correct. Thank you. Is there anybody else? If not, then I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I just want to concur. I would like to concur with everything you just said. You know, one of the interesting things here with the Planning Commission sort of taking the authority and being the final authority on site plan review in particular, is we've over the past few months learned from some of these projects that need to go to site plan review, and how many years in advance the process has started with speaking with our expert city staff to understand what can be done on a site plan, how to go about it, what the process is, a little give and take on discussing what conceptual plans might be, how they could play out into something that, you know, can go to a conceptual review and then a site plan. With what is before us, it takes away the authority for city staff to do that, and even if they were to do that, it does not -- they could put, with the authority for the Planning Commission to have the final say and interpret the zoning code, the city staff could put them in a completely wrong direction, and months and years of time are wasted. Not only that, if we're allowing the Planning Commission to have be the final say on the zoning code related to subdivision and site plan review, there could be a project two parcels up that doesn't require site plan review, where the Building Inspector can make an interpretation of code, and then a project two parcels down that requires site plan review could have a completely different interpretation based on what the Planning Commission has decided. I'm in no way -- the value of having the Planning Commission and the site plan review process is important, and I don't -- this isn't putting any less value on that, but having the Planning Commission and the city staff be able to interpret zoning code differently, and in some instances, the Building Inspector has the final say, in some instances, the Planning Commission has the final say, I see nothing but litigation coming up before us. And as you said, Mayor, it puts now the Building Inspector in a position where they could enforce things, one, that they don't agree with and interpret differently, but then, you know, once a site plan review is approved and a plan goes forward, and it's outside of the Planning Commission's hands, then the Building Inspector can enforce things completely differently than the intent of the Planning Commission, and just, this is very messy. And, you know, for all of the reasons you said, Mayor, I'm not going to repeat any of them, but this is going to be very problematic for our city, and it's the Planning Commission well beyond its authority. Not only that, you're -- we're putting the power that is -- has not been given, to our knowledge, in any other municipality in this state, to a group of people who I like and respect very much, but do not have educational requirements or other guidelines in place for their appointment, and giving them authority when we have city staff that have educational requirements, certification requirements, and they're experts. And taking authority away from them when, quite frankly, you know, some of my colleagues just yesterday talked about how much they value and respect our city staff, it's our greatest asset. Yeah, this is a slap in the face to them, and for that reason, I will be voting no.
Is there any further discussion or comments? Or, again, I'll entertain a motion. And remember, we have two ordinances in front of us.
Mayor, I would like to make an ordinance, or make a motion to -- for an ordinance to amend Chapter 270, Section 270-82, titled "Enforcement of Chapter Plot Plan Relating to Building Inspector's Authority to Interpret and Enforce Chapter 270 Zoning." Clarification, a motion to adopt the ordinance. We have to do two separate votes.
So this is entitled Exhibit A in our documents. Is there a second?
A second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Mark Saunders to adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 270, Section 270-82, titled "Enforcement of Chapter Plot Plan Relating to the Building Inspector's Authority to Interpret and Enforce Chapter 270 Zoning," also known as the PC version. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, and remember...
There's no -- it's a legislation.
We don't have to.
That's right.
You don't have to give a reason or rationale, but it would certainly be welcome. We'll start with Commissioner Mark Saunders.
I vote aye, and the reasoning for my aye is, although I have great respect for what the mayor and Commissioner Stranowski just explained, I disagree with the skin in the game. I believe that the nine Planning Commission members are taxpayers. They live here. They don't go home at night to Shelbyville or wherever. They have far more at stake than a Building Inspector that may come and go. So I believe they are the organic members of our community, and I believe that they are going to make the right decisions when there's a decision in controversy. So I'm voting yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Stranowski?
No, for the reasons why I stated earlier.
Commissioner Gossett?
I vote aye, and I believe that with regards to comments made previously by Mr. Decker, I am also a strong proponent of a rewriting of the code. The aspect of the detail is in the code. Most of the challenges that we meet here at the city is the...
Most of the challenges that we meet here at the city is the ambiguities in the code. And we have had the code rewrite on many levels in front of us, as we discussed yesterday, since at least 2020. If not before, is outlined in the CDP of 2010, again, the update in 2015, and the CDP of 2020. That's where the problem lies. And finally, I think we're getting some traction to make changes to that. Just a reminder that the site plan review came into impact in 2009. And since that time, there have been 11 site plan reviews in place, nine of which have taken place in 2024, in the last year, year and a half. That's because there is redevelopment happening in the city on a large scale. And a reminder also that the site plan review has criteria. This is not affect any residential properties or anything of that nature. It is major development within the city, which allows the aspect of those to be heard in public, to be reviewed in public, to have, as we're having today, a public hearing for comments to take place. Nothing is done in, I won't say a back room, but in a small office with regards to what is proposed or what is not proposed. And again, following other communities in the state of Delaware that follow the same process. If a applicant is aggrieved, there is a process that, that questioning has a process to address that agreement, and we're going to follow that in a few weeks, as we have done in the past. So I think this is the right initial step, and, but I believe the true answer to this is a rewrite of the code, and not done by internal aspects, certainly have the place at the table for that, but this needs to be done by a professional organization that has experienced this throughout the community and country. Thank you.
Commissioner Markert?
I, I vote yes, and I'd just like to give a few comments. I, I see this more, at least my decision is, is, is based on the issue of governance primarily. I, I just, Commissioner Shonowsky had used the word messy, and, and I, I kind of tapped on that a little bit, just thinking in terms of, yes, government can be messy. You know, I can't say it's messy all the time, but there, it has its messy moments. And, and the, the thing about, in this particular case, the more public involvement, you know, obviously, you know, creates, you know, potentially creates discord and disharmony, but the fact that it, it is open to, to public input, and I think it demands public input, and there's a great attempt to get public input in the, in these process, in the process, particularly with regard to pro, excuse me, projects that, you know, you know, have to go through site plan review because they tend to be, obviously tend to be larger projects and probably more, more significant in terms of their effect on the community and so forth, I, I think is necessary. And, and that, to me, that, that is the key, the key ingredient to all this, is more, more heads, more eyes, more public involvement, I think creates a better outcome in the long run. So that's, that is my justification for voting aye.
Commissioner Thier?
I as well am voting yes, and for many of the same reasons that Commissioner Saunders, Commissioner Gossett, and Commissioner Markert described. But specifically, or, or things I want to highlight, is there were some references during this discussion about wrong direction, different interpretations. That's a result of, or, that's a result of the code. And as been mentioned a few times by some of my fellow commissioners, as well as some of the public comments, the code needs to get updated. Okay? As was previously mentioned, there is money in the budget to update the code, and what I can tell you is, at least as long as I'm sitting up here, that's not something that's going to fall by the wayside. That will happen. Okay? So we got to fix the code. Two, transparency. Okay? If we go back to early 2023, there was a, an engagement with Wallace Montgomery to review the Building and Licensing Department. And there were a lot of recommendations that came out of that. But for me, one of the bigger ones was the embracing of technology, right? Was to get applications, this whole process online. And it wasn't just about efficiency and effectiveness. Of course, we're going to get efficiency and effectiveness from technology, but that gives us the opportunity to be more transparent. If all of this information is in our municipal systems, it then can be made available online. And that's the transparency part. It's something that the residents of this community want. They want to know what's going on in the permitting process, who's submitting applications, are applications getting approved? And the easiest and best way for them to do that is to simply go to the city website and do a search. If somebody submits an application, they should know in real time, literally within seconds of that being entered into the system, that it was entered into the system. So for me as well, as I sit up here, and as long as I'm sitting up here, that's something I'm going to be pushing for, is the embracing of technology and transparency, not just for this processes, but, but for processes in general, but just, I want to come back to the code. The issue here is the code, and we need to move forward with updating the code. So again, I am voting aye, I am voting yes for this. Thank you.
Thank you. And the chair votes no for all the reasons I stated earlier. The vote is for yes, two no, and so the motion carries. Thank you very much. And now we have part B to go to.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance to create a new section 236-6-dot-two regarding applicability of the Planning Commission authority to decisions of the City Board of Adjustments, amend Chapter 236, Section 236-9, titled Partitioning of Land, Section 236-10, titled Minor Subdivisions, Consolidation of Lots, amend Section 236-12, titled Approval Procedures for Major Subdivisions, and amend Section 236-30, titled Site Plan Required Purpose Considerations, to clarify the authority of the Planning Commission regarding interpretation and enforcement of Chapter 270, zoning and site plan review, and in minor and major subdivision review.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Mark Saunders to adopt an ordinance to create a new section 236-6-point-two regarding the applicability of Planning Commission authority to decisions of the city's Board of Adjustment. And can I say just et cetera?
Yes.
As, as is before us. Is there any additional discussion? If not, I'm going to do a roll call vote. I'll start the rotate here. Commissioner Shonowsky?
No, for the reasons why I stated earlier.
Commissioner Gossett?
I vote yes, and based on that no jurisdiction in Delaware allows city employees to have the final say with regards to this type of matter, the opportunity for local businesses and residents to see and comment on applications before them, and the commission, the Planning Commission is bound by legal requirements for open meetings, FOIA disclosures, FOIA disclosures, public hearings, and issues written decisions. So I vote aye.
Commissioner Markert?
I vote aye for the reasons stated by Commissioner Gossett.
Commissioner Thier?
I vote aye for the reasons stated by Commissioner Gossett.
Commissioner Saunders?
I vote aye also for the reasons previously stated.
And the chair votes no, just out of disinterest, and because of my earlier vote. With that, again, there is a four-two, two vote in that ordinance. So we've got two new adopted ordinances. Thank you all very much. We'll be moving on to... The second purpose of this special meeting is to get a status update on the proposed public-private partnership, proposed public-private partnership between the City of Rehoboth Beach and Clear Space Theater Company, including a presentation of a draft term sheet. The intent here today is really to have an introduction of this topic, one is not intending on voting on anything to come to final conclusions, but more to open it up to what's been going on. And Taylor, are you going to?
Yeah.
Do a little introduction, maybe a review of how we got to this point?
Of course. So, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. As the mayor stated, this is an introduction. So back on December 20th, 2024, the Board of Commissioners directed myself, our Assistant City Manager Evan Miller, to work with Clear Space to see what it would take to keep them in the city limits of the City of Rehoboth Beach. So we have met with Joe Fowler, the Managing Director of Clear Space, alongside their Treasurer of the Board, to discuss potential terms that would aid in keeping Clear Space in the city. So in your packet today, there is a, a sheet of potential terms for discussion. Today, we can discuss some or all of them. And at this point, we also have Joe Fowler here to answer questions specifically regarding the project, regarding Clear Space. I know at least one of his board members is here in the audience as well. But this item today is meant for discussion and to go over the potential, the potential terms. So, so here I am to facilitate the conversation and answer questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. Joe, maybe you want to come up to the, to the lectern, if you don't mind, just some, you may want to contribute to this discussion. And I'll have you introduce yourself in a minute. Perhaps the easiest thing is to go line by line, if you don't mind, and then that way we can have a conversation among ourselves. I do notice that, you know, again, the Commissioners were all excited at your last report, Joe. And I know Don Preston, Commissioner Preston, in particular, was excited about trying to do what we could do to keep Clear Space in town. And I think that's, I would guess that that's a universal feeling here. But, but obviously, how that is handled by the city and how much we contribute to you all staying here is very important, especially when it comes to dealing with donating land or providing land or providing contributions and funding, et cetera, with that. So if you would, go ahead and introduce yourself there, Joe.
Sure. My name is Joe Fowler, and I'm the Managing Director at Clear Space Theater Company.
You've been there about a year and a quarter?
About a year and a quarter.
Yeah. Very good, very good. So I'm just going to open it to the Commissioners at some point, if members of the public have any questions, and they can, we'll get to the members of the public. The, do you have a particular way you want to handle this? Because, you know...
We can go point by point.
Talking about the duration, line number 11, the lease is a 30-year triple-net lease with two 10-year options. Triple-net, refresh my memory, that's where the tenant has to pay for all the expenses of HVACs and all the building envelope and...
Correct. So a triple-net lease is where the, the tenant is responsible for the property. It's similar to ownership, but we retain the ownership, and Clear Space would be responsible for building their building and taking care of their building, utilities, things of that nature.
Mayor, a question?
Commissioner Saunders?
Would that include taxes? How would taxes be handled on a nonprofit organization, real estate taxes?
So typically, on a triple-net lease, the taxes are the responsibility of the leaseholder. I'm not sure, you know, tax status of what type of nonprofit organization they are, but, but that would be something their tax professional could, could assist them with.
And if you're going to come to me, I do not know. I do believe it'd be tax exempt.
I know whether they pay taxes or not.
Mayor, if, if I may, just...
Commissioner Gossett, yes?
I know all of these are very important aspects to discuss and review and what have you, and move forward with, and I'm very much supportive of keeping Clear Space in town. But the site that you've selected has a tenant, and they have a valid lease until 2030. So I'm just curious as to, has there been conversations between the two individuals, two organizations, about how to move forward here? And just, you know, it's all about time and money, I guess, is everything it comes down to in life. I'm happy to comment on that.
That's a good point. That's probably the most critical thing that, that needs to be done first. I understand you had a conversation with them. I know Suzanne Good sent you and me a letter that she had talked with them, and I don't remember the content, but that it could be six, eight, 10 years before they move out. Can you shine a little light on that?
I'll let Joe give his...
Yeah, I'm happy to comment on that. So we've been in close communication with Greg Murphy, who's the Chairman of the Board of the Senior Center. He is having a knee replacement surgery and is in pre-op at the moment today, somewhere in Pennsylvania, but he said he would otherwise be here to speak on behalf of this term sheet if he could be able to be here. And he indicated that any Commissioner is welcome to contact him directly to talk about the Senior Center's understanding of their current timeline. And I have his cell phone number to provide, not on the public record, so not everyone in America has his cell phone number right now, but I can share it after the meeting, as, as folks may wish to have it. But what he has shared with me as late as yesterday is that he intends for the Senior Center to be a good partner with Clear Space and the city in the successful transition of the parcel to Clear Space Theater Company, should all parties decide to move forward with this parcel. They do have some uncertainty in their timeline because of the nature of federal funding right now and the way in which federal grants are being released currently. Ideally, the federal grant process will have more clarity in the, the months ahead. But in his conversations with me, he indicates that he recognizes that their lease ends in 2030. And honestly, Clear Space is making, I think, a meaningful concession to say, we cannot take possession of the land until January of 2031. In the context of this term sheet, we are comfortable with that timeline to proceed with, with this parcel at this point in the negotiation. I just want to re-acknowledge what I said previously. This is a term sheet that we've worked on together. Our board at Clear Space still needs to then vote to make a decision for where Clear Space will decide to build. So the conversation today is still to help us understand the terms that would be at play, to help our board make a decision when it comes to deciding where they'd like to put their focus on the site for, for the new Performing Arts Center.
Okay. Well, I wish we had something more definitive, obviously, but I would at least, at least like to indicate that right now, I would have no interest in booting them.
Yes.
And so I don't know what your hope or expectation is, you know, but, you know, if you had a three-year timeline on this, I'm not interested in kicking them out.
We do not.
And Mayor, if I may, so in the Senior Center's current lease, there is a 10-year option past the 2030 mark, which does require approval of the city. Of course, we don't want to remove them from the property, so that's not an option. But if they did need to stay later, I've, I've had some conversations with Joe that, you know, we might, it could be flexible depending on the Senior Center's needs, but, but as time goes on, we'll know more of, of their timeline.
And I think there's a shared interest for the Senior Center to be able to relocate to where they wish to relocate on Hebron Road, that would be shared by Clear Space, should this parcel be the parcel that Clear Space and the city work together to, to construct the Performing Arts Center on. So I, I believe that there would be many advocates to support the Senior Center's efforts to meet the 2030 timeline. And I, my understanding of the letter that may have, or the, the report that may have been received from the conversation that was had with the Senior Center, is that the conversation was had in the absence of the board chair being in the conversation. So I don't know for certain what was said in that particular conversation with a different Commissioner, but I do know that the board chair of the Senior Center was not present, and therefore was not able to contribute his point of view in that dialogue.
All right. Very good. If there's no more questions, let's, let's do, do this line by line, but we don't need to dwell on a lot of it.
If I may, I just, just to kind of follow up on that, though, I, I did have a conversation with the board chair, Mr. Greg Murphy.
And the conclusion of the, of the conversation was he was very supportive of, of this. But his, his comment at, at the bottom of the closure was, we're treading water. Because they have no indication from the federal government for their loans or grant funding, or loan, and there are other funding sources for them that are contingent on them receiving the federal funding. And his, on his comment to me, he said, you know, I believe that it's, we're at least a year off, if not more, from having any substantial information from federal funding as, as the current administration is not giving away money. In fact, you know, they're reducing staff, et cetera, et cetera. So, his, his closing comment was just, we're treading water. So, that's kind of where my mind is at the moment. Then, all of these, again, informations are very, details in the, in the term sheet. But if we're at least 12 to 18 months off, I think some of these terms, depending on the economy as we're going forward and what have you, are, again, kind of a lot of what-ifs here. So, just, just give you the perspective of, of the Board Chair of, of the Senior Center that I, that I have had a conversation with.
Mayor, if I could, please?
Commissioner Thayer?
Thank you. So, in my mind here, I kind of break this into three items. And I'm not going to use term issue, I'm going to term items. Where, one of the items is the Senior Center moving, which we're discussing here. And I think Commissioner Gossett brings up some very important points related to, you know, when they're actually going to be able to move. And I think it's important for all of us up here, as well as ClearSpace, that we're not, you know, ignoring, not ignoring, I guess, I'll use the term obvious, but I really don't want to use the term obvious. But given the current political environment, and they're counting on a four-plus million dollar grant from the USDA, which, given the political environment, is probably not coming in the next four years, you know, how do they move? Right? As Commissioner Gossett said, they're basically treading water. They would have to go out and find, you know, additional funding sources to come up with the $8 to $10 million to build that new Senior Center. So, I think for us up here, as well as ClearSpace, and this is just a point, I'm not trying to answer. The question is, is, is there an alternative, right? If they're not going to get this grant in the next four years, which I think is unlikely, but we could probably find out whether they're going to get it anytime soon, what's Plan B? Right? Because if they're not going to move for four years, that takes us to 2029, you know, is the earliest they would have funding, right? So, that means it could be 2031, 2032, before they even leave the property, giving them time to, you know, design, build, and whatnot in that new space. And if that's not going to work in ClearSpace's timeline, is there something else that, you know, we can do? And that's, I'm not saying there is, I'm just putting that out there as an open question. So, for me, I see this as, as one of the items that us up here, as well as, you know, probably more ClearSpace, we can't ignore. Because if Senior Center doesn't move, ClearSpace, you know, we can come up with the, the best-looking term sheet possible with, you know, all sorts of wonderful terms, but if they don't move, you know, it doesn't mean anything.
We're negotiating against ourselves, which, which is pointless. Joe, no one up here wants to kick the, the Senior Center out. Does, does the Board or ClearSpace recognize that it may not be 2029, 2030, 2031? We don't know. Are you guys willing to accept that and be flexible and wait?
I would say that understanding that as a data point is going to be something that our Board will weigh when making the decisions that have to be made. At this point, I can say in confidence that we recognize that at a 2030 timeline, where, you know, ownership wouldn't transfer till 2031, is something that I think we have, we have braced ourselves for and recognize as a reality. And if that reality is something that's going to slip by another year or two, I think it's something we just need to meaningfully consider. But I would agree with a lot of what I've heard. One, we're not looking to, to move the Senior Center. We want the Senior Center to be successful on their terms. We want them to be able to build what they want to build and have sought to build now for some time. And I think that ClearSpace recognizing that that is a key factor in all of the related timelines for this Performing Arts Center to be built would be a strong ally and advocate for the Senior Center's success. And I would expect that the city would be a strong advocate for the Senior Center's success as well, in whatever form that takes. But I, I can't speak on behalf of our entire, the entirety of our Board and say, yes, the Board would agree to a 2033 timeline at this point. I think we're, we're weighing the same questions you are.
Right. With that being said, I think it makes sense to move forward with that understanding.
Mayor, can I?
Commissioner Saunders?
Speaking, I spoke briefly with Mr. Tetter and others, and there's some possibilities and maybe some Delaware state financing available to them. And Mr. Tetter had told me that perhaps we could help them with their, with their looking into those, putting them in touch with the right people. We've all been in touch with our new county representative. I think we've all been in touch with Claire Snyder and others. So, that I think that we could help them in some way. Again, of course, it has to be contingent upon them moving on their own time. But I think we could maybe help them investigate other opportunities for funding above and beyond the USDA funding that they had counted on.
Mayor, if I could, please?
Commissioner Thayer?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make sure I'm not being misunderstood here. So, first off, you know, I do support working to keep ClearSpace in town. So, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding of that. Mr. Saunders, thank you. I think that was, you know, I think as far as moving of the Senior Center and getting them financing, I think you raise, you know, an excellent point, which is, you know, how can we help them? You know, are there other opportunities for funding for the Senior Center to help them move on a timeline that aligns with ClearSpace? So, so, Mr. Saunders, thank you. And again, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, I do support trying to keep them in town. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Back to our little list there, 30-year net lease will commence, that's to be worked out. Preparation of parcel, removal of the current Cape and Lope Senior Center. I'm looking at what are costs that you're asking us to bear. If feasible, city will move the Anahazard House. I've been told in the past that it is not capable of being moved, but maybe that's something that regardless, we should go ahead and examine anyhow. We may want to move it to the historical campus at Grove Park, regardless of what happens at things. So, if you're fine with that, we can put that in motion. The scope of the building, that the construction, bullet number one is the construction is on the shoulder and pockets of the ClearSpace. Proscenium, and I used to be in theater, so I know these terms. If anybody needs to know what they are, then we can ask Joe. Maximized parking, city supports construction of a structure with parking at grade and ClearSpace Public Spaces for the new performing arts, starting on the second floor. That I don't understand. Is that limiting parking to the ground level and only because the building, occupied building starts on the second floor?
That's correct, Mayor. And we had discussions of a parking structure, you know, subterranean parking, other discussions. But ultimately, city staff, and, and I think ClearSpace staff as well, felt that it was extremely cost prohibitive to do anything other than having the building start on the second floor and have surface parking underneath the building. So, that is at grade. And I believe the city would gain about 44 approximately spots from that.
Well, I've, I've spoken about this before, and I guess I'd like to re-articulate. My, my point for supporting ClearSpace in that position was predicated on you going to that, that location and us partnering in a parking garage, that I said at the time that I would be willing to consider funding two stories of a parking garage if ClearSpace funded another two stories. To me, that, that helps spread the funding that's needed for it, to make it doable. It helps us, the city, resolve a lack of parking problem. It also, while giving some of the spaces, but not all, to ClearSpace Theater. And so, I'm not really supportive of just a one-story parking area there. Again, I was thinking of a parking garage where we could gain hundreds of parking spaces, and it would benefit you all because you all could use it and the city could use it in times when, when it's not, not full. But that's my thing. Commissioner Gossett?
Just based on the comment about parking, what have you, are there any renderings that exist of, of the potential building that show, you know, at grade or just an idea of what the?
We have massing studies, but until we know where we're going to build, we haven't engaged architects to do full renderings.
Or even just a partial rendering?
Yes, we, we've got a typical side view at this point of the facility based on one of the massing studies that was conducted.
Based, based on the surface parking lot?
Correct. It, it shows what surface would look like with building above, as well as what a level below surface would look like in, in that particular plan.
That show the full height of the building?
Yes, it does.
I think that might be helpful in some future meetings to, to have a look at.
And Mayor Mills, if I may, in responding, I, I believe ClearSpace is perfectly open to whatever parking decision the city wishes to make on the parcel. In the course of negotiation around the defining the terms on this term sheet earlier on, the question did come up to say, would ClearSpace like to invest in parking so that ClearSpace receives a portion of revenue from parking in that space? And it appeared at the time that the cleaner path forward was to give the city full ownership of revenue from parking and therefore to give the city full sort of ownership of what was needed for parking. And therefore, staying at grade and not going down or not going up would reduce the overhead cost for the city as there were, there were concerns raised that the city might not be interested in investing as much as would be required to put in parking at multiple levels. But as ClearSpace, we have no, we are agnostic as to what the parking configuration looks like, as long as the city understands the configuration of the building may need to evolve based on what decisions are being made related to parking.
Well, again, the value of ClearSpace going there, for me, would be to contribute significantly to a parking garage. And I, I don't even know if that would happen up there because it takes the other Commissioners to have to agree to something like that, but.
Isn't it, I guess that's my mind, is that practical? Is it, is it doable with the space there and the building? And, I mean, it's a great concept, but I guess that's getting too deep into.
I've been told that a parking garage can fit on that space. I have been told, but I don't know the verification.
I've been told also that it, you know, it, it could, but that's not from an architect or designer. I guess that's where, if we're, we're getting into terms or just, I, I would like to try to deal with some hard data in that regards to, to know option A, option B. Again, I know we're, it's, we don't even know when the Senior Center is moving, so a lot of these questions are premature. But I think as we move forward, which I, I'm supportive of, is that, that's the, the investment that, that we're willing to make to, to maintain, you know, ClearSpace in, in the city.
And in staff's analysis of, of looking at a potential parking structure there, for above-grade garage parking, the last numbers that I heard was anywhere between $40,000 and $60,000 a space. So, you'd be talking about nearly 20-plus million dollars for a parking structure. And ClearSpace was willing to, if we shared the revenue from the parking, you know, people parking there, they would be willing to have some type of contribution for the garage. If the city retains all of the revenue from the garage, then they would not. But I think ultimately, the payoff on that would be difficult to realize just with seasonal demand only.
Mayor, a question?
Commissioner Saunders?
Question, Mr. Taylor, uh, Mr. Tetter. And we're considering the existing parking lot, so there'll be an income loss with their not from whatever we do. And we, we, I, we don't know how much, I know at this point, but it would be interesting to know how much we are currently generating from the lot that we share with the Senior Center.
So, we would be gaining spots in this proposal. Right now, we provide, I believe it's about 35 spots to the Senior Center. So, we aren't, we aren't getting much revenue from spaces in that lot currently.
But the adjacent lot with it is metered, we'll be giving that up, so.
No, no, we would not lose that.
Would not lose that. They would be able to construct without the use of that parking lot?
Right.
But I, for clarification, I'm sorry, is, though, we already provide 30 spaces to the Senior Center free of charge from that lot. So, we're not realizing any revenue in that point yet, which is an issue that has been grandfathered in. But I, I believe that should, should be reviewed going forward. Not necessarily that that would carry forward. Some agreement, perhaps, yes, but a blanket 30 spaces free should be reviewed. Let me just put it that way.
So, under the current proposal, it, of course, it can change at any time when they get down the road with architecture or, you know, site development. But it appears that we would gain about 45-metered spots, and that's taking into account spots that ClearSpace would need on their own for staff parking, things of that nature.
And would that include the Anahazard space?
No. It, that space will probably, if, if the Anahazard House can in fact be moved, it would probably be more like a pocket park or green space with trees or public art, something of that nature.
So, again, it's too far down the line, but then I don't understand the, the purpose for moving Anahazard if it's going to, we're going to turn it into a park. Basically, that's what it is now, so.
To make it a cultural arts campus, something, well, Joe, you want to talk about it?
If I could, I would like to respond on the question of parking and revenue. We have done some preliminary analysis, and I want to acknowledge it's preliminary, and I would like to work with the city to make sure our analysis is as airtight as possible. But in our preliminary analysis, we show that with the surface parking additional loan, which is the term we were considering at this point, we see if all, if parking season remains the same and if parking rates remain the same as they are today, which, being, being realistic, five or six years from now, that those things might be evolving. But if we look at current terms, we see incremental annual revenue to the city of $255,000 and change from the additional summer parking spots that would open up as a result of this, partly a function of a near guarantee that you would have for evenings of our performances, the lot completely full, because we would be driving the people to be parking in, in those spaces and looking at what the rest of the day would look like outside of the times we were in performance. So, that, that's at least based on the assumption of the additional 40 to 50 spots that would be added to this parcel. And while the Senior Center may be keeping 30 or so spots at no cost, these projections assume that ClearSpace has given 16 and not 30 spots. So, we, we are trying to make sure, as we consider the, the financials of this, that this is of a net financial benefit to, to the city and to everyone in the community through this. Sorry, the question on Anahazard, that was a proposal that came to ClearSpace from the city. We are also agnostic on whether the Anahazard House is moved or not moved. But if the Anahazard House is moved, it would create greater permeable space on the parcel. So, if we do have to work with a fully at-grade parking situation, it would allow us to offset additional non-p permeable space that would need to come in for parking by creating more permeable space elsewhere on the parcel.
Commissioner Thayer?
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, I pulled together a financial analysis on this over the weekend. I did send Mr. Tetter a copy of that right before the meeting. I think it would be helpful if I kind of walked through what the costs would be. The costs, as well as the, you know, kind of long-term financial impact to the city. costs, as well as the, you know, kind of long-term financial impact to the city. You okay with that?
You want to do that now?
Yeah, I think it would be a good time to do that now. We're jumping a little bit ahead, we're not to financials yet, but I think we're just about there, so.
And if you want to switch to the, okay.
If you can go to the first tab.
Yeah.
Okay, so, there's two tabs I'm gonna walk through here, and if everyone would just give me a minute or two to kind of walk through this template. So, I've got, in line two, I've got, you know, draft in capital and in bold, so I think it's important for everyone to understand this is draft. As with any financial analysis, I've made some assumptions, I think based on some of the discussions here today, particularly around parking, maybe some of those discussions do or do not change. So, so let's walk through, we're just getting to the section on financials, so I'm gonna cover that a little bit here. I've broken this into kind of a classic, almost, you know, net present value P&amp;L analysis. So, starting at the top, the city investments, the capital contribution that's being referenced in this document, in the derived agreement, would be about $2.5 million. So, I realize that in the agreement, it says $1 million, but there's also a line for waiving building fees. What I understand from Mr. Tedder, the waiving of those building fees would be about $1.5 million, so that's how I get my $2 million. It's $1 million capital contribution, $1.5 million in waiving building fees. I then have a line for fee waiver where I have it at zero, and I've put I cannot waive fees. And again, this is assumption here, my initial reaction to that is, I don't want to start setting precedence to waiving building fees. If they want us to contribute something to the building of this, to this project, then let's understand what that is, right now, what they've asked for, or what is in the agreement. I don't want to say what they asked for, what's in the agreement is $2.5 million. I'm not suggesting I agree with that, I'm just taking the numbers that were in the agreement and building a plan. So, I'm opposed to waiving fees, but again, that's an assumption that would be for all of us to decide. Demolition of the senior center, I have $750,000 in there. Again, that's kind of a guess for me, but I kind of feel like that's probably fairly reasonable. Land preparation, grading and building the parking lot, so again, just based on what's being proposed here, there would be a parking lot at ground level, the theater would be built starting on the second floor, so to speak, okay? So, I've got $1.5 million in there for what I'm referring to as land preparation, and think of that as grading and building the parking lot.
The survey and all of those.
Exactly. Everything in, right? So, I think about about $1.25 million to demo and to prepare the land. Again, that's just my assumption, it's not based on anything other than probably a really good guess. I then, as we always have to do, I put a.
Can you enlarge that once?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I then, you know, as we should, I add a contingency of 20%. My 20% is just based on the demo and the land prep, right? Because there's going to be no contingency on whatever capital contribution we agree to, whatever it is, that's what it's gonna be. So, I add 20% for contingency, that's 20% of the demo and land prep, and Anahazard, right? So I want to make sure we're incorporating the potential move of Anahazard. This may be light, right? I don't know what it would cost to move Anahazard, but anyways, I came up with 20%, $250,000. So, the total investment by the city for this would be about $4 million, okay? Value of the land, so right now, I have that at zero, and I'm not suggesting it's zero, I just don't know what the value of the land is.
And on the value of the land, so we have issued an RFP for appraisals on various city properties, so those should be coming back soon, and then we are going to get the land appraised for both lease and sale, so.
Thank you. So, right now, it's zero, as Mr. Tedder said, that's, you know, we're gonna have an appraisal here in the not-too-distant future, so we're gonna want to plug that in here, right? You know, again, this is full transparency, looking at it with our eyes wide open. So anyways, right now, total of that land is $4 million. And we're not even talking about building parking garages, right, which could be multiple millions of dollars, you know, which is part of the discussion today, so we'll just kind of stick with what I've done. So, $4 million. This project doesn't work for the city without some sort of, I'm referring to it as a ticketing fee, right? And when I say ticketing fee, for every ticket that's sold, a fee is assessed, a nominal fee is assessed, that comes directly back to the city, okay? So I'm gonna get to a second page here, which is my assumptions on the ticketing fee, okay? So the ticketing fee, and then some potentially incremental parking revenue, okay, because we'll have additional spots. The net present value of that over 30 years, and again, I'm using 30 years, we could get into conversation, should it be 25, should it be 20, should it be 35? Again, assumptions here, I'm using 30 years, the net present value of that would be just over 2.1 million. My net present value is based on 3.5%. Somebody probably needs to just double-check my net present value calculation. But again, about 2.1 million in income over that 30 years, which means the net city investment is just under 1.9 million. If we continue to scroll down a little bit, I then get into the intangibles, okay? So we're the items above that, we can clearly identify what they are, and clearly quantify the costs. We're now moving down to things that the city would get from this project, but are going to be difficult to value. One is goodwill, you know, I have that as TBD. That's always going to be a controversial issue, because some people are gonna say there is no goodwill, some people are gonna say there is goodwill. I've just left it at zero, but I didn't want to ignore it. Revitalization, so when the senior center leaves, we're gonna have to do something with this lot, and I think one of the options is just not leaving the senior center there vacant to deteriorate over time. We know from other parcels in the city, that simply just doesn't work. So, we're gonna have to pay something to revitalize that property. I've put 1.5 million in here, again, that's my assumption. I've based that really primarily on our recent discussions on Streetscape, where we're gonna pay $5 million to revitalize a block. Again, it's an assumption, 1.5 million, I appreciate this one as well, as, I don't want to use the term "it's gonna be controversial," but it's certainly gonna be debatable, because some people are gonna say that, you know, you know, we shouldn't do anything, we should just, you know, make it an empty vacant lot. So anyways, but I do want to recognize that, you know, there is revitalization that is gonna come from putting a theater in this space. So I've tagged it at 1.5 million. So, after, you know, the net city investment after the intangibles, I come up with just about $390,000. So again, for me, from a financial perspective, we're missing a couple of things, right? Value from the land, we've got assumptions over a 30-year period, what the net present value is, there's been discussions about parking, so we haven't addressed parking, I'm gonna come back to parking in a second. But at least based on what's up here, you know, the financials, I can make the argument, you know, just from a pure financial perspective, the finances really are not that far, if we can get a ticketing fee, and I'm gonna go over the ticketing fees in a second, really not that far off, okay? Can we jump to the second tab?
Yeah.
So I wanted to go through my assumptions on, you know, ticket fees and parking. Okay, so my net present value assumption is based on 3.5%, which I think is very reasonable over a 30-year period. My ticket fee assumptions, and again, you know, I think there are, we need, these are what I put in here, and what I put in here was probably more to get us somewhere to a net city investment after intangibles, that was probably in a reasonable range, but I think these are definitely open for discussion. Ticket fee assumptions, you know, years one to five, our ticket fee would be a dollar. Years six to 10, it would be a dollar and a half, and then years 11, 30, it would be $2. We can, we can look at that 11 to 30, leaving at $2, you know, or at least committing in an agreement, keeping that frozen at $2 over 20 years is probably not a good idea. So we, I definitely want to revisit that, but again, I wanted to come up with an analysis here. So ticket fees are a dollar, a dollar fifty, and $2, again, which I feel is, you know, very nominal. Parking assumptions, so my parking assumptions are based on net incremental attendance. So, Joe, you can correct me if my assumptions are wrong here, but, so what I did is incremental car ratio per attendee is .35. You had told me this number, but I didn't write it down, so I don't know what it is. Is that about right?
About right.
Okay, okay, you can give me the number.
You can refine this.
Yeah, perfect, perfect. I've put in parking per car, and again, this is at the current rate of $4 per hour, so that's 12 bucks, okay? And again, as I'm thinking about this, I've got some errors in this, because we only charge for parking three months out of the year, and I'm kind of assuming it's 12 years, so this analysis is off. But, point being, I'm thinking year one attendance, I think your attendance right now is in 24, 25,000 range, so I'm thinking year one with the new facility, new seats, we're up to 30,000. Incremental attendance from where we are today, if you kind of just go across, and I'll do these, right? So year one, we're talking attendance of 30,000, the ticket fee is a dollar, so the city gets $30,000 in ticket fees in year one. Incremental attendance is 5,000, our car ratio is .35, so the incremental cars is 1,750, times 12 is $21,000 for a total revenue in the first year of 51,000. Now, as I just stated, this analysis is incorrect, because I'm assuming, that assumes that we're charging for parking 12 months out of the year, which we're not, so that amount is gonna be a little bit less, okay?
I might say, looking at the number there, that might simply be the incremental growth in the summer season.
Yep.
So I, we can refine, but I like where you're heading in trying to assess the process.
Absolutely, so, thank you. So, if we just scroll down, just go over one more column if you could, where we still have the headers, so Taylor, if you can go up a little bit, okay? So, okay, so we got them all, total city revenue. Okay, if you can scroll back to the left for me, to the years. Thank you, and then just scroll down.
Zoom out, maybe.
Yeah. So, as I had said, I built this on a 30-year timeline, that was my assumption, line 47, column J, total revenue over those 30 years would be about, just under 3.7 million based on these ticket fees. Net present value of those cash flows is that 2.1 million, which I transferred back to the front page. And again, somebody probably needs, I used Excel's NPV function, which I haven't used in probably five years, so somebody probably needs to double-check that for me. And that 2.1 is what I transferred back to the first page. So maybe we can just kind of ju, well, let me stop here. Questions?
Let me just ask one question, and forgive my ignorance, would we not, assuming that we have city participation in this thing, it would be effectively a public lot during the off, when you're not having stop?
Yeah, so that is, that's the, that's the assumption, and again, this is just, you know, my thinking, right? So, my understanding is, is that the lot would be owned and maintained by the city, right? So we'd use Park Mobile the way we use today, or whatever system we use at that point in I think we're, as far as reserving the spots for ClearSpace, particularly during the summer, you know, I think we can do what we do elsewhere, which is we can put up signs, use Park Mobile to stop parking at 5 o'clock, right? So people who are not there for a theater event would have to leave the lot by 5:00. That then does bring up the question, what if people don't leave? I think as we've heard from our parking discussion yesterday, there are challenges with towing people and ticketing people and getting people to move out, so ClearSpace has to understand, you know, the city will work in its best efforts to make that lot available for theater patrons, but we probably can't guarantee anything. So I kind of gave an expanded answer, but my understanding is, it'd be a city-owned lot, we'd own it, operate it, maintain it. Correct me if my understanding is wrong.
Yes, that's the understanding. I would footnote this to acknowledge you're assessing, oh, sorry, thank you. I just would footnote this to acknowledge you, what you've done beautiful here is assess the impact from our audiences during performance times, but there, with an additional volume of parking available to the city, I do believe that there is even more upside, because for the rest of the day, the city is generating revenue throughout the parking season off of those added spots, which come into the equation because of this project. So that's where our, the 255 incremental, $255,000 incremental annually that we calculated, that's the primary reason for the difference between your calculations and our calculations there.
So, before I field any more questions, so, you know, I think one of the things that everyone can take from my analysis is that, you know, for the city, this is probably not gonna work with some, without some sort of ticket fee, which I hope ClearSpace is open to. So let me go back to fielding any questions in my analysis.
The second page, what was the, the revenue, was 55,000?
51,000.
51. But that's based on 12 months.
12 months of parking, which we just.
Yeah. 12 months of parking, which is not valid.
Quick and dirty, that would drop to about 20,000, based on 65% of it, it dropped to about 20,000.
Yeah, actually would, so there's, there's two numbers in there, and just to be clear, Commissioner Gossett, so that 51 is the 30 in ticket fees.
Okay.
And then another 21 for incremental parking revenue. So it'd be, we'd reduce the 21.
Yeah. So it's about 35% of the year we charge for parking, so.
Yeah. So that 31 is gonna be 7,500, so you're gonna lose about 12 or so, so it's probably 38-ish, right? Somewhere in that range, so.
And I don't, you don't have this in front of you, so I don't want to spout numbers that folks don't have a visual reference for, but in the analysis that we looked at, we looked at 100 total spots, which meant 16 spots reserved for ClearSpace, 84 spots available for city revenue across the summer parking season. We assumed daytime parking for the 115 days of the parking season, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., at 80% utilization. And at 80% utilization, at $4 an hour, and eight hours a day, off of 84 available spots, that is $247,296 in daytime parking before ClearSpace patrons would be pulling in. We then looked at the income from evening parking on our show days, and over the 115 days of the summer parking season, there are 65 performance days in our current schedule. The utilization at 100% there, for four hours of paid parking at $4 an hour, is another $87,360. And then for the remaining 50 non-show days, we assumed utilization stayed at the same 80%, which Taylor and Evan had shared with us, is about the, sort of the back-of-envelope math for parking utilization in that piece of the corridor, which adds another $53,760. So the total for all of that was $388,416 in total parking revenue per year for this new expanded lot. I didn't have numbers on what this lot currently generates in its current configuration, but making similar assumptions of 80% utilization during the summer parking season, it appears that currently that would come to $132,480 in current utilization. That could be much higher if in fact 30 spots are free to the seniors and not 16 spots are free to the seniors. But with that math, that's where we got to the $255,936 in incremental new parking revenue annually for the city. So, I value this, because it's helping to break it out based on just our attendance, our attendees, but it would probably, it would be wise for the city to look at the total impact of that additional parking coming online, rather than just the four hours, you know, of performance times.
Yeah. So, and I appreciate your analysis, and if you could send that to me after the meeting, I'll take a look at it and then we can kind of determine what to do. I think one thing with Mr. Fowler's analysis that we need to keep in mind is that he's assuming that because we have X number of additional spots, there are X number of additional people are gonna show up in town and park, and that's a very difficult argument. So, I think it's, I think it's something that we need to, you know, if we're gonna move forward here, it's something that we need to consider and discuss. I'm not arguing that it's zero, but it's very difficult for me to argue that, you know, because we have 50 new spots, we're gonna get 50 incremental people showing up here in town every day as incremental revenue. And we know that, I mean, we all know that, because we, you know, we live in this town, and during the summer, particularly during the week, we can walk up and down certain streets, and there's plenty of empty spaces, so. So again, that would be my thoughts on that.
Commissioner Mark? Yeah, I just had a question, a question to you basically, or anybody really. Yeah, I just had a question, question to you basically, or anybody really. With the, any of the business, and I'm thinking specifically about the Bellmore, and this is 12 months, I mean, they do some kind of convention, not convention, but they have meetings and things like that. Would they be in any way a customer of the lot, do you think, in some way? I don't know. Yeah, that, that just came to mind, and I'm just wondering if they're, if having this available to them would, would be an advantage or whatever.
Great question.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Saunders?
And let me ask Joe. Joe, do you think there's any opportunity that your patrons would pay for parking all year long if it was a reserved lot specifically for them? They drive right in, it's $2 for the night or whatever?
I think we'd be open to that conversation, to explore what that would look like.
Some people, I think, would.
I think the, the proximity of parking to the building for folks who might not feel comfortable or interested in walking the block or two to get to the building would be always a benefit, but that's, that's a subject--
We could emphasize, we could emphasize the rough neighborhood it is for you, you know, generate that.
Just, just for clarification, the assumption here is that 16 spaces reserved 24/7 at no revenue for ClearSpace?
Correct, which is what we understood the number was for the senior center. So we tried to not, we tried to not make any changes to that.
I'm disagreeing.
And I heard today 30, so that would be an improvement for the city if it is, in fact, 30 and not 16.
You can look at it that way, yes. You know, Craig, I really appreciate this. It gives us some data to work on and carry through, but my concern is, you know, we're at least 18 months away from anything with regards to the possibility of senior center, that's maybe the earliest day moving, and these numbers are going to fluctuate hopefully down, but I doubt it with our current economic situation and the cost of steel going up and all of that kind of nonsense. So just keep that in mind when we're looking at these figures, that it could, it could double, you know?
Yeah, and I think, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gossett, if I could, thank you.
No, no.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Gossett brings up a really good point, which is, you know, we're looking to come to, you know, agreement pretty quickly here, you know, to, come to look, get to an agreement pretty quickly here, right? Let's, let's say what it is. But the construction is years off. So the cost of the construction, you know, whatever it may get, the point I'm getting to is, is that we're going to commit now to a dollar amount, right? I don't want to say unequivocally, or never say never, that that can't change at some point in time down the road, but if that contribution amount changes, we all need to agree that the ticketing fee amount will probably need to change as well. I don't want my suggestion or ask for the ticketing fee to be interpreted as, oh, well, you know, we can just give more money, we'll just increment, increase the ticketing fee. Absolutely not, right? Because there is inherent risk to the city in whatever we give them, particularly the cash capital contribution, right? That's money out of our pocket. And people will make the argument that the, whatever that number is, if we include some sort of building fees as an offset, again, that is also money out of our pocket. So this is not as simple as, oh, the number can be whatever we want, and we'll just backfill it with ticketing fees, because there is inherent risk to us in whatever, whatever money we provide. If it's possible, I could just make a couple of comments on parking? Okay, great. So we've talked a lot about parking recently in our meetings, and one of the things that we've talked about is the analysis that Mr. Teder and Mr. Miller are working on to help us understand where's the revenue coming from, where are people parking, right? What zones are they parking in, what days of the week are they parking, what times of the day? That's going to do a couple of things for us. One is, it's going to help us better understand, you know, what is our capacity, right? What's our utilization? And when is that utilization? So one of the things I, I believe we need to discuss, and it comes from a couple, a couple of different angles, is the parking on this spot, right, where the senior center is today. As everyone knows, or probably know from reading the document, we're talking 62-foot height for the fly balcony. Just for the fly balcony, everything is going to be below our current 42 feet. That's based on having ground-level parking. So if we eliminate that parking, we drop the building down, that 62 feet is going to go down some number of feet. I don't know what it's going to go down, eight, 10 feet? So it goes down eight or 10 feet, right? So we go from 62 down to 52, you know, sub, let's say, sub-55, right? And we all know this is going to be an issue of discussion amongst the residents, right? So parking, you know, I hear, and again, this is why this analysis that, that Mr. Teder and Mr. Miller are working on is so important, is, is I hear that this municipal lot is underutilized, right? Is it? If it's underutilized, then maybe we should be, you know, working with ClearSpace to make sure that their patrons are parking in this municipal lot. We know things are busy here on the weekends, right? So maybe the underutilization is, is it's underutilized during the week, but it's full-on weekends. I don't know, but I'm just kind of coming back to parking. When we talk about parking garages and spending a lot of money on parking garages, quite frankly, it scares me because I don't know what the utilization of parking here is in this city. And every dollar we spend to create an additional parking space does not give us incremental revenue unless we attract an incremental car into the city. So I feel as though that is something that we should be talking about, is understanding what utilization is on parking, and, you know, do we need a lot there? If not, you know, we have, do we have other places that are being underutilized, and we got to leverage those, and we don't need a lot here, which could affect the height? Again, just thoughts in my head. So let me stop there.
Max wants to--
If I could, following up on something Commissioner Thier said on the height. So we can't agree by contract as a city to say we're going to allow X, right? So you're going to have to either go to the Board of Adjustment or get a text amendment. When the text amendment comes forward, depends on who the bodies are in this chair, whether or not they're going to support it, right? So for five years down the road, because we can't bind, this council can't bind a future council with respect to a zoning matter. I just wanted you to be aware, because it says we're going to support, so he's going to support. Yes, this council can support, but you still have to go through those processes. You're going to have to, whatever council's in play, you're going to have to get a text amendment, you're going to have to get a Board of Adjustment variance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shenalsky?
Yeah, I've got a couple points, but first, let me, I really love Commissioner Thier, your presentation. I think you did a great job, and your discussion about utilization on the impact that has, I think is very important. And, and I know Mayor Mills and I have had this conversation, and at one time I was very much in favor of there being a parking garage. And I'm, you know, thinking about utilization, I have a really hard time investing what may be $20 million in something that is only utilized 80% of the, or 90% of the time two months out of the year, and then is completely sitting empty, or almost empty, another nine, 10 months out of the year. I have a hard time justifying that and finding the value in it. So I, I had been leaning away from that, that thought, but I do think that increasing with the current configuration that you're proposing, increasing between 40 and 50 parking spots, I think is, is a great compromise and a, and a great thing. Related to the, to the rest of the financial analysis, I, I mean, we can get real numbers, but I think the demolition cost is, is way overstated. And then I had a question about the, the grading and, and putting in the surface parking. The way that the term sheet reads, it basically says that ClearSpace would be adding, so my, my reading that you would be adding 40 to 50 spaces, my reading of that is you guys are assuming the cost of, of doing that. Is, is that how you currently understand it?
We had not assumed otherwise.
Okay. So, so that is another $500,000 that I would probably take out of that, the financial And then I just lost my, oh, then related to, to the zoning matter, this is municipal land, and does the zoning, do we not have to adhere to the building code?
You have to adhere to the building code. I'm talking about the zoning code. You guys can make the zoning code whatever you want for that property, you can do whatever you need to.
Okay.
But you still have to adhere to the building code unless there's an exemption granted by council.
Okay.
As a point of clarification, how, was that the process for the construction of this building?
Who knows?
Okay.
I just did the bond for this building and fought about that, but I didn't, was not involved in the zoning at that time.
Along those lines, just, again, to make sure of this, it is zoned open space, so construction on open space is not permitted, so we'd have to change the zoning of the, of the land. So that's another--
Right.
Technical--
Technical, okay.
It has to be a text, you know, you'd have to do a text amendment to the code to allow whatever is proposed, right? You just can't do it by contract, right?
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not suggesting that we should allow them to do whatever they want. I'm just, I'm trying to understand what, what the rules are and what the process is, because my recollection was the building of this building, there were, we didn't, there wasn't a Board of Adjustment hearing or, or anything of the, of the such.
I would imagine, and this is rote speculation, that they did some sort of a text amendment or resolution to allow it, because it didn't come up in the bond litigation, so, and they brought up everything.
Mayor, question please. Commissioner Saunders?
Let me ask Max, or maybe I'll ask you, Mr. Fowler, you will be getting, no doubt, lending on this property, a loan of some sort. Would the loan be attached to our land? Would our land be the collateral for their loan?
It would depend on the terms of the loan, but we would--
No, Joe?
Our intention at this stage is if we are going to incur any debt, we would incur debt for cash flow purposes during the course of the project and not incur long-term debt. We are not currently envisioning a mortgage, a long-term mortgage situation.
That's, I bring that up because when we had the Garage Committee a couple of years ago, that was the, the problem, was that the garage, people are going to build the garage, we're going to use our land as collateral, and of course, they could walk away, and we'd have a garage and a loan.
Right, but, but even if they were to receive some type of mortgage, they would not be able to use our land as collateral unless we allowed them to do so.
Correct, but I thought, I wanted to know if they expected us to allow them to, I guess is a better way to put it. Thank you.
And can you put this back on the screen, please? Is there anything in here that commissioners would like to target?
Mayor, if I may, the last--
Gossett, go ahead.
Just, again, explanation, I'm not, not quite understanding what this means, but it raises just some definitions. Under autonomy, it says the land lease between ClearSpace Theater Company shall in no way impact ClearSpace's full creativity, autonomy, and its artistic and business endeavors. And I, you know, with the current, current climate, I can get the artistic endeavors and what have you, but it depends on who reads it. Business endeavors, does that have an, have a question of city code, operating license, noise ordinance, hours of operation, that kind of thing? I'm just, I don't, it's not detailed here, and I'm just, which side of the coin to look at?
I would assume it's within the, within the confines of any existing law, code, or regulation. This isn't to say that we can do whatever the heck we want.
You can't buy, you can't buy a lease, get around the city code.
Right, yeah, that, that's not what--
You know, I'm just--
I don't believe that was the intent, but you're correct, it is vague and should--
From my understanding, that piece is, you know, if they want to have different showtimes, or the types of shows, or things of that nature, just the city wouldn't be telling them, no, we, we don't like that production, you shouldn't do it.
And I totally understand that in our current climate, if you will, but I've just, with regards to city code, hours of operation, just general business property, so, just, again, once we get any further on this, that those types of specifics need to be carved out. Mayor, if I could, please?
Yeah, well, seems to me the most critical element here is what is the status of the senior center? All this is moot to me until we can get that answer.
Contingent on that question, I guess ClearSpace would ask the Board of Commissioners the sentiment behind what's here. If that question is a resolvable question, are there concerns with what is documented in these proposed terms sufficient enough to not encourage further conversation to move towards a actual public-private partnership agreement, should our board decide that this is the parcel upon which they'd like to proceed? Because I think, I think the, where our kind of rubber hits the road is on timing and our board's ability to make a decision on how to proceed. So if this is a parcel that there is general consensus from the Board of Commissioners around continuing the dialogue to pursue, the unknown remains the unknown for both the city and for ClearSpace. So we share in that uncertainty, and, and we share in that risk in that way. But I guess that would be the, sort of the bottom-line question, is, is this something that the commissioners would say, yes, we would like to continue to move towards something that could be a true legal public-private partnership agreement, rather than this draft of terms, which is really the starting point for a negotiation, not the ending point of any negotiation?
And just, just to clarify--
Shenalsky?
You said timing, right? And I just want to be clear, your, your, what you mean by timing is ClearSpace needs to make a decision on whether, what parcel of land they want to commit to, to building on, and not when that building will take place.
That is correct. Until we have a parcel that is, that is agreed upon by all parties, we cannot begin the work of architectural renderings, we cannot begin the work of the meaningful fundraising lift that is ahead of us. So the longer we live in that limbo, the, the further it puts us behind the eight ball to be able to do the, the major fundraising campaign that's ahead of us, to be able to engage the architects and anyone else who would need to be part of bringing drawings forward for anyone to review. And I, and I know that, that even if we are looking at a 20, 30 timeline and beyond, this process takes a while, and we would like to be able to begin movement on the process in a way that is thoughtful, so that we can achieve a 2031 start date. If we, if we wait 18 months, that in and of itself may be difficult, just knowing all of the other variables at play, and I know that our board has intended to make a vote this month on where that parcel will be.
Thank you. Let's pause a minute and go to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to say anything? Come on up to the microphone, Jan. State your name and relationship to the city, please, and tap on that, make sure that's on. Yes, ma'am?
Jan Conacy, 42 Oak Avenue. Obviously, many people that are up here weren't here when ClearSpace wanted to build on the top of Rehoboth Avenue. Many of you were. And I would venture to say that I didn't know about this thing until about three days ago, that probably 95% of the people in town haven't a clue as to this, this proposal and this discussion. And so I would hope that there would be much more of an effort to let residents know. Another question, there are 1,700 people roughly in this town, 1,700 residents. What other community this size has a public-private partnership, where you're taking our tax dollars, when you're talking about city money, no, it's my tax dollar money, our tax dollar money, going? And I don't know if it's a good or a bad thing. I'm just saying that we are a very tiny town, you know, nine months out of the year, and with certain amount of tax revenues. So that's one thing. But the most important thing to me, and the important thing that happened back when it was going to be on, on Rehoboth Avenue, and in fact, I had many conversations with Walt Cassell, and said I thought the senior center location was probably the best location for ClearSpace if they were going to stay in town, except not a 62-foot-tall building. Scale, 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 scale. Look at the scale of this town. We don't have buildings that tall. We fight hard to keep our scale correct. If you look at Provincetown, and you look at-- If you look at Provincetown, and you look at Nantucket, and you look all over at resort communities that have summer theater or year-round theater, and they are typically always in a scale. The theaters that we saw last time that Clear Space presented were in downtown, were in Baltimore or out in a, in a major city. They were not in a town this size with a 42-foot height. So, I have real issues, and I know that many, many people who supported, who support Clear Space would not support the 62 feet. That is hugely high. In, in, in that little triangle of land, it would stand out all over town. So, so the other thing I, I note, and I'm sure we all noticed this, people always tell me they live in Rehoboth Beach. I was at Clear Space a couple Sundays ago, and, and it was a sellout. And I was, had a walker then, I was sitting by the door in a handicap space. And one of the things I noticed is, I didn't, and we were with some friends who were sitting inside, we didn't recognize a single person there. Most of the people think they live in Rehoboth Beach, but they don't live in Rehoboth Beach. So, they fill out a survey and they say, "We live in Rehoboth Beach." No, they live in the Glades, they live across Route 1, and, sorry, my three minutes is up. So, so I think that with survey results who say Rehoboth Beach people want something is probably not 100% accurate. I think we can all safely assume if there are 7,000 people who get lines in the sand, that we do not have 7,000 residents in Rehoboth Beach. So, I think that, that you all have a lot of decisions to make, but I think that there needs to be much, much more information shared with the residents of Rehoboth about the potential and what you all are thinking about. Posting something on, on the, you know, on your, on your website with the meeting, a week before the meeting, doesn't, in February, now it's March, does not give people enough time to really understand what's going on and enough discussion. I don't think there's any lack of wanting Clear Space to stay in town. I think everybody would love to have Clear Space stay in town. I personally think going out on Hebron next to the senior center, then you can build 62 feet, and then you can have a parking space, and you can have the jolly trolley run people back and forth to restaurants, there's all kinds of things you can do. But whatever, I'm not on your board. If you want to stay in town, then you need to respect our town. And to respect our town looks at the scale and the size of our town, and the kind of building that can be built. And I think that's going to be a huge issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Back to the commissioners, any?
I'd like to just make one comment. I mean, I think it's interesting that we, we just walked away from a $20 million deal. And, and, and here, you know, I mean, we're, we're, I mean, I think we're doing the right thing, certainly by discussing, you know, the ins and outs and the details, obviously, is, you know, due diligence, certainly, you know, for this particular proposal. But, I mean, so, I mean, I think, and obviously, you know, I think we've, we've discussed a lot, a lot of those details today. I think are pertinent, and it's, it's meaningful that we're doing them. But the, to me, the, the main issue about this, and I don't know, this is like stuck in my head from when I took economics in school, but they always talk about the real cost, and the real cost is what you got to give up to get what you want. You know, so, so, and we have a piece of land, we have money in the bank, we have whatever we have, and we, we have the possibility of doing streetscape in other parts of the city. We have, you know, other proposals, other needs and so forth and so on. I, I think it's incumbent upon us, I guess, to, you know, place this among them and, and figure out, is really, is this really what we want to commit these resources, you know, towards, or, or something else or whatever? So, I think that's, that's to me the, the burden of our responsibility and all this, you know, along with, you know, what we're, what we're trying to accomplish now.
And so, what would we like the next steps to be?
Mayor, two, one data question, and just curious, we've never dealt with a ticket fee before. Is that something legally that the city can do? Is it a tax, is there's a fee?
It's a fee.
But we, we, the city could charge a fee on someone else's revenue?
I can always create a, I can always create a challenge that somebody would make, but I could defend that, and I think it would be legal. Right? Somebody can always challenge everything, but I think, I think, I think that would be legal, because it would be a financing option, you know.
It would be more of an agreement.
Yeah, it would be more of an agreement, correct, yeah.
Another legal fee to charge us.
Yeah, there you go. It's always good to pay lawyers.
I guess, you know, where I'm coming from and following up on Commissioner Markert's comments, this is a public-private partnership that we're looking at, and I'm looking at that public side of it. And I just don't feel that there's been enough public input or public information or acknowledgement or the details. I mean, if, if you had a rendering or an image, or, you know, in culinary school, I always learned, you sell the sizzle, not the steak. So, you know, building up the information and the excitement and what have you, but that's based on, on a, an image. So, I, I think that would be very important to help understand really what our investment is in, in the community and the community's investment in, in Clear Space. I mean, that's a, a starting point.
If I may, I do think that's an excellent point. I think that the, the challenge truly comes in the, the timing of the expense in the course of the work. Because until our board has made a decision as to where we're going to focus the, the investment of building this new facility, it, it does become difficult to create a, create the kind of renderings that perhaps you, you would like to see. And I also think that part of the dialogue with the public should be tied to what those renderings ultimately are. So, I would, I would be wary to say, "Here's a picture of what a building could be," before we've been in dialogue with the public for what the building would want to, to, to look like and to be. And if I just might.
But didn't you, I'm sorry, but didn't you do a survey that?
We did a massing study. So, the massing study.
A survey, reach out to the public, I thought there was?
Oh, yes, we, we did that, but we didn't ask them for architectural information as part of that. That, that was about, very much about site selection. And, and just to, to acknowledge to your point before, we have in all of our surveys, we directly asked if you live in the municipal limits of the city of Rehoboth Beach, or in the zip code of 19. I, I hear your point, and people may still misidentify, but I, I just want to acknowledge we have worked to, to the best of our ability to collect data that gives us that view as clearly. Yeah. I have a couple of remarks that I didn't get to share. Do you mind if I take the?
Go ahead, Joe.
This, this, this is, this will be, be brief, but I, through all this dialogue, I just want to thank, at the outset, the work that both Evan and Taylor have made in having these conversations with myself and with Al Willis, our board treasurer. It was very thoughtful dialogue, and it helped us to understand best what the needs of the city are in the, in all of these conversations that led to the, the draft proposed term sheet that, that everyone has in front of them. But I did want to specifically thank, there's only, there's no commissioner I wouldn't want to thank, but I want to call out Mayor Mills, because it's been a little over a year, I think now, since you first pointed out to say, "I don't know if you've explored this parcel, but if you would ask Clear Space, consider exploring this parcel." It could be a viable parcel for you, which led us to do the work of the massing study and many other things that let us understand that, yes, this would be a viable location to help Clear Space remain in the municipal limits of, of Rehoboth Beach. So, I want to thank you for introducing the idea a few months into my tenure here in Rehoboth. And I, I want to also acknowledge Commissioner Good, who's not at the room, in the room right now, because she did advocate back in July in writing specifically for this parcel as well, which was something that I thought was very, very gracious of her in the course of the, the election process that, that happened this past summer. And the, the other thing I want to just sort of reiterate is that, as I said before, this term sheet that we're looking at, if, if there is any consensus from within the commissioners to proceed in conversation further, that, that this, if it's accepted then by the Clear Space board as the plan for where Clear Space does ultimately decide to build truly is the start of negotiations. So, suggestions that Commissioner Thier has brought forward about a ticketing fee is something that would absolutely be something we would want to be in dialogue with the city about, we'd want to be in dialogue with the community about at that point. But we don't want to start a dialogue with the community about a parcel until we've decided it's the parcel. Otherwise, as there are other parcels in play, it could complicate matters in any negotiation on, on any other, any other land. And I, I will acknowledge that as the board moves forward on the timeline, that, that they will determine to vote on parcels, this is the only parcel in 19971 still under consideration, based on the results of the market study and the work that we have done. So, I, I want to be sure that that's, that's heard, because yes, there are other parcels in other parts of the zip code that have come forward, and for various reasons, those other parcels have been recognized as not viable for, for construction and for this particular project. So, I do want to just sort of acknowledge that. I wasn't shaking my head at you because I thought it was a bad idea, just to acknowledge that that particular parcel that you mentioned, along with any others people might share, may not be parcels that are currently in the board's purview to decide to, to vote upon in, in the course of this work. The, in the end, we want to be sure that this leads us to a fair and thoughtful outcome for everyone. We have been working in good faith, and the numbers that I have put together are going to be imperfect to start. The numbers Commissioner Thier has put together, we recognize we're all going to be imperfect at the start, and we will continue to refine until we can get to the clearest financial analysis possible. But in the end, this performing arts center isn't something that's for Clear Space. We believe it's very much for the community, and we want to make sure that in serving the community, that we will be the best stewards possible of this space. We will be, of course, the primary occupants of the space, we will be the ones producing most of the work in the space. But we intend for it to be a big tent for other performing arts organizations in coastal Delaware to be able to perform as well. As there remains in all of Sussex County, not a single purpose-built performing arts center. And it's been identified in statewide analysis that that is a critical infrastructure need for Sussex County, and the opportunity for any community to bring that infrastructure in, to help to support what it means for great growth in arts and culture, does, I believe, only bring net positive to the quality of life for everyone in our community, whether they live in the municipal limits or they don't live in the municipal limits of any particular municipality. The, the, the last thing I wanted to just acknowledge, I've shared some data from some analysis we've done before. I did want to just share some data, and I can send this to all the commissioners if people would like to see, but it's in draft form, because we still need to get, you know, accurate figures in all places. But we did a analysis of economic impact for Clear Space currently in Rehoboth Beach, simply looking at the number of ticketed folks at our main stage performances, the total number of volunteers that are coming to our main stage performances, the sheer bodies that are coming in to the, to the building. And in a range of surveys that we've conducted over the course of the year, we identified that 54.79% of our survey respondents do dine within walking distance of our facility currently. And just doing a low-ball estimate of $35 a head for a pre-show meal, which I'm sure is a lot less than what a pre-show meal costs once you have a glass of wine or two with dinner. We see in 2024 alone, $466,488 in direct revenue to the restaurants that are in Rehoboth Beach through our audiences this past year. We did some analysis on hotels as well, but we can't do that work with absolute certainty. We do know that people, 18.58% of our survey respondents do not live in Sussex County. A few might be in Wilmington, but that's largely regional and national travel. We know some of those folks are folks that are coming in for the beach regardless, and they come to Clear Space anyway. But we also know that national data shows that 32% of cultural tourists add time to their trip because they are attending arts events. So, we did some estimates there as well, and we've done some estimates on what the impact is of summer parking. And we're, we're seeing what appears to be a little over $1 million in direct annual economic impact to Rehoboth Beach in our current location, in our current format, and looking at what it would mean to be in a larger facility in some number of years into the future, where we have more people who are coming in and serving the community. We're looking at another $882,000 roughly in direct growth of that economic impact, which is, I think, something that is just good, that the intrinsic of having a, a cultural arts center in a community creates better quality of life, does all of the intrinsic good that I think Commissioner Thier sort of tried to point to without being able to assign a dollar amount to. But there is direct economic benefit as well, and we, we believe in this community, but we also believe, and we believe in the whole of the community of coastal Delaware, and I just want to be sure that some of those numbers are heard and understood too as you're contemplating the calculus of what it means to invest, you know, in any form in this partnership moving forward. So, I thank you for your time very much, and I, I'm glad to take any other questions or just talk to any of you offline, as you may need.
Very good, Joe. Thank you for working with everybody, and we appreciate that. I thought this was a very productive introduction. What I'd like to ask the commissioners is, is there a will to direct the city manager and staff to continue working with Joe?
Mayor, if I could, please?
Commissioner Thier?
Yeah, so, early in this discussion, you know, I said there's, to me, there's three items here. There's the financial aspect, there's the senior center, and then there's the code aspect or the height aspect. Let's start with senior center. That's really kind of out of our control at this point. I, I don't think that doesn't mean that, you know, as a body here, we can't help or work with the senior center to make sure that they're getting the funding, whether it's USDA or something else. And I say that even without regard to this project, right? They're in town here, if they need our support for something, then we should be there to support them, whether we're talking about Clear Space or not. So, again, senior center is a little bit out of our control here. They recognize that it's out of our control, so I kind of push that item aside. I don't think that's for us to address at this point. Building height, I think as Mr. Walton said, we can't commit, you know, future commissioners or, or mayors to, you know, to something in the code. Correct me if I misstated that, Max.
You got it.
Right? So, we could, I don't know what language we could put in this agreement, you know, maybe best efforts, but we can't commit to doing anything.
Correct.
Right? So, and I think we all appreciate that, and it's one of the reasons why I brought up the parking, you know, at grade versus second floor, because that is definitely going to be up for debate. I don't know how the debate is going to go, but it's going to be up for debate, debate. Which then leaves the financial aspect of it. You know, I would like to see us go back to this term sheet and come up with, you know, financial terms that make sense, and at least agree to those with Clear Space. Senior says, center doesn't move, right? Then, you know, it doesn't happen, or probably language in there that, you know, indicates that if senior center doesn't, you know, there's, there's, I guess there's language in there that makes this void if certain things happen that, that may happen. I stated it earlier, I would like to see Clear Space in town, stay in town. You know, we talked yesterday about grant applications and organizations that, you know, we need. I think Clear Space has a long history. I think if we can come to financial terms that make sense to both sides, then yeah, I think we, you know, that is a step towards keeping them in town, and the things that we can't control, well, we just can't control those right now. Senior center and the height of the building. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Saunders?
I agree with everything Mr. Thier, Commissioner Thier said, but I want to add too that even if Clear Space goes somewhere else and the senior center leaves, we're going to have a large parcel we'll have to deal with. So, that this is a, a, perhaps a, the best possible use of a parcel, that we may end up having another park, make it empty, I, I don't know. I mean, if, it, it looks like senior says, senior, senior center is going to move eventually. So, I'm just saying, I would hate this to get away from us and then have some lesser, less desirable institution take its place. That's all.
Well, it is, it is our land, so we've, we've got control.
Well, we have to do something with it, though, is what I'm saying.
Employee recreational center. Anybody else? Commissioner Markert?
Yeah, I, I, I just, my only comments in terms of like steps forward, I mean, we, I don't, I think there's things, obviously, that Commissioner Thier enumerated, the, I mean, in addition, I think it would be helpful, I mean, we haven't, as, as our, our, as Jan had said, you know, the public really has no real, has not weighed in on this at all, and I, and I hope it's not divisive. It may very well be, because that can happen. But, but anyway, right, right now, I think there's certainly contingents in town that are very supportive, and I think we're going to have a contention that's not going to be so supportive, and, and kind of freak out about the money and all this other kind of stuff. But anyway, I, I, I think, I think if, if there's any lessons learned from the last experience that we had, I think it would be really helpful for Clear Space, to the extent possible, to kind of, I mean, you're going to be going through this probably under any circumstance, whether it's going to be here or at another location, to really get an understanding of what your fundraising efforts are going to be. You know, I mean, obviously, I think you have certain. You know, I mean, obviously, I think you have certainly captive funders, you know, individual funders certainly who live in town. And we recognize too, you are a regional theater. I mean, and I think it's great that you would like to kind of put down roots here, you know, permanent roots. But, you know, you serve a much broader area that we're inviting in here and hopefully have a wonderful time and have a comfortable experience and eat our food and drink our beer and all that stuff. But I think that would be really helpful and I think build confidence, you know, that you're serious about this and you've got the wherewithal in order to carry this out. So I would certainly ask that, you know, at the very least, so. But in the meantime, I think we have somewhat of a list of things that I think we can do in the meantime. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bulkey. Commissioner Thier, if you're going to update your chart, if you would distribute that to us so that we can study a little more, very good. I appreciate you doing that. Well, I've heard enough that I think the will is here to continue discussions. And so we'll task the city manager to continue to meet with you and move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
With that, we're going to go to the next item on the agenda, Jan, which is citizen comment. Do you have, off topic, do you have anything further you want to say? You don't have to, I'm not, I'm not.
I've always wondered this and I'll just ask.
You got three minutes.
No, I don't even need three minutes. Does anybody ever?
Jan Conacy.
Jan Conacy, 42 Oak Avenue. Does anybody ever look at the Park and Ride anymore? That is a major, major option for us. And everybody complains about lack of parking, but no one's ever sat down in years with the state and said, what can we do? How can we work together to have employees,